We get started and then Michael join us. How's that sound? I know everybody's time is so precious this time of the year. Good morning and welcome. My name is Edward Carney and I am the co-chair, along with Sherri Levin Wallach of the Advisory Committee, tasked with identifying options on whether and to what extent the New York State Court of Appeals should adopt pre or post-admission requirements supplementing the next-gen bar exam. This is the second of three public hearings. The last one is scheduled for June 9th between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00. The purpose of these hearings is to receive views from interested individuals, organizations, and law firms on possible options. The link is posted on the Court of Appeals website for members of the public who wish to watch these hearings, so please get the word out. I think we're going to start today. I'm just going to go around and I think if, I'll introduce myself first, but if the other members of the committee could just say hello and maybe a brief introduction, that would be great, okay? My name, as I said, is Edward Carney. I am affiliated with the firm of Hancock, Estabrook, and Syracuse. I am a former Associate Appellate Division Justice in the Fourth Department, as well as the Second some time ago. So, welcome. We appreciate, appreciate everybody being here today. I know the deans have such a busy schedule this time of the year, and we do, we truly appreciate your input and your attendance here today. Why don't I have first Judge Glenn, if you want to say hello?
Hi, and hi especially to all the women deans. I think my first year as a woman dean, I was the only woman dean in New York State, and it's really exciting to see all of you. Not that the men, I'm sure, are not wonderful, but it's a, it's a great move forward. So, I was the dean of CUNY for 10 years. I did a lot of work around the bar exam, as I think people know. And I was a judge for 25 years on a trial court, on an intermediate appellate court, and at the end in the surrogates court. And so I straddle both the judiciary and legal education in terms of my interest in the bar exam.
Okay, Megan, if you want to say hello?
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Megan Chamberlain. I am the Global Director of Recruiting at Kirkland &amp; Ellis. I'm really looking forward to hearing from all of you this morning.
Okay, and Dean Boyd?
Good morning. I'm Yules Boyd. I'm the dean of admissions and financial aid at Brooklyn Law School. I've been there for 10 years, relatively new to committee work in the New York State Bar Association, but I did serve on the Committee of Legal Education and Admission to the Bar, and that's my interest in the bar exam.
Thank you, Dean. Is Michael with us yet?
Yes, yes. Good morning, Ed, and good morning, everybody. Nice to see you all. My name is Michael McNamara. I'm a senior partner at the law firm Seward &amp; Kissel. I'm a past president of the New York County Lawyers Association. Currently a member of the Executive Committee of the New York State Bar Association, and I've been quite involved with bar issues as well. I was a member of the task force at State Bar that looked into the UBE a couple of years back. Nice to see you all. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dean Crowell of New York Law School. Welcome, Dean. We're glad you're here, and please appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity to testify. I'm just going to briefly state that the testimony we'll give today is on behalf of all 15 law schools. I think some of you certainly know that the law school deans in the state have a close working relationship, and we're, we are very aligned in terms of our views on the subject matter that we will testify about, but also, most importantly, in alignment on being full partners with you and trying to get at the best ways to approach building the profession in New York State. And so it's a, it's a pleasure to be able to be with you. I have three of my colleagues today who will testify, and another colleague, Dean Melanie Leslie from Cardozo. She and I will be part of the Q and A. Dean Leslie and I are the senior-most deans in the state, and we coordinate the 15 law school deans. I'm going to let our colleagues who will testify first introduce themselves. We have Jelani Jefferson Exum. You want to introduce yourself, Dean Exum, from St. John's?
Yes, thank you. Hello, I'm Jelani Jefferson Exum, dean of St. John's University School of Law. This is my first year, just finishing my first year as dean there, and it's a pleasure to be with you all, and I appreciate you inviting us to give our views today.
And we have next Terrence Lau, who is the dean at Syracuse.
Good morning, everybody. Terrence Lau at Syracuse Law School, and very happy to be here to speak with you about our views on the bar exam as well. Good morning.
Thank you.
And next we have Jenny Roberts, the dean at Hofstra.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us. I'm also finishing my first year as dean, and I am a longtime member of the New York State Bar, and I've taught criminal defense clinics in Anadaga County and in Maryland through American University where I used to teach.
Great. And then Dean Leslie from Cardozo.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Leslie, Cardozo Law School. As Anthony said, I've been, I'm finishing my 10th year as dean at Cardozo, and I'm also a Cardozo Law School graduate.
Yes, and just by way of markers, I'm starting my 14th year in two days at New York Law School. And, and Judge Glenn, I'll tell you, on the, it is wonderful that there are so many more women deans than at the time when you served, and we had our commencement yesterday celebrating 67% of the class graduating who were women, and 70% of our class will be women entering in August. So, we are, we are thrilled by that. So, the profession has, has really embraced the presence of women, and it's wonderful.
And if I could just chime in, I believe, someone, last time I looked, I believe that now fully one-third of the 200 deans of American law schools are women. So, that's all, and that's happened within the 10 years since I've been serving.
And just to bring it full circle, I will tell you that when I started at Columbia, there was only one bathroom for the 3% of students who were women.
All right, so we will, if it's okay with you, we'll let the three deans begin at your direction.
Sure, let's proceed.
Well, thank you so much. I'm going to get us started off, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today regarding the future of New York-specific bar licensing requirements at the time of transition to the next-gen bar, which of course, as we all know, is scheduled to take effect in July of 2028. We appreciate, the deans appreciate the thoughtful approach the Court of Appeals has taken in appointing this committee and in soliciting feedback from law school leaders, the practicing bar, and other institutions and groups invested in the integrity and in the effectiveness of bar licensure in New York. We offer our comments today as law school leaders who respect and value both the rigor of New York's admissions process and the importance of ensuring a practical, efficient, and equitable pathway to licensure. This testimony was prepared and approved by deans of all 15 law schools in New York State, and we'll share the names of the schools at a later point, and it's offered by our subgroup that have been designated to speak on behalf of the full group. Each of our schools is equally committed to excellence and ensuring that our graduates are well-prepared to pass all qualifying examinations for admission to the bar and to begin the practice of law. We're also proud that the student bodies, faculties, and locations of our schools are as broad and diverse as our state and indeed as our world. Our graduates pursue careers in every area of the law in an every type of practice setting, from large international corporate law firms to small community-based litigation practices, and from sophisticated in-house compliance departments to government agencies and of course nonprofit legal service providers and beyond. The range of student interests and market demands for new lawyers in such a wide array of practice areas underscores that law schools must hold sacred our responsibility to build into our students the capacity and skills to develop knowledge and experience in nuanced areas of the law over the spans of their careers that could never be covered in three years of law school. We will address the points the Advisory Committee asked to hear about in testimony, and then when we're done, as Dean Crowell pointed out, I think at this point, we have two other deans who will join us during the Q and A to ensure you have a broad and representative group of us to help answer questions. Again, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am offering perspectives on the current NYLC and NYLE, but starting off, just to give a little bit of information about the New York law-specific licensing component, we appreciate that the Court of Appeals has a legitimate interest in wanting individuals licensed to practice law in New York to recognize the complexities and distinctive features of New York law, governing, among other things, business corporations, civil practice, criminal practice, trust and estates, and domestic relations. For this reason, we believe the continued inclusion of a New York-specific licensing component, satisfied namely through the current NYLC and the New York Law Exam, the NYLE, strikes a reasonable balance that is practical and supports state-specific rigor. Indeed, we acknowledge that maintaining such rigor can only be achieved through regular refinement of the NYLC and NYLE, which we believe can be undertaken to make the study material increasingly more accessible and thus candidates increasingly better prepared for the exam and the demands of practice in New York. We note that of only 15 of the 41 UBE jurisdictions currently require a pre-licensing local component. Eight of them require an online course, and six require an online multiple-choice exam. New York's requirements are the most rigorous, and it's the only jurisdiction that requires both a course and an exam. So, in offering perspectives of the 15 law deans on the current NYLC and NYLE, in general, we believe that both together form a straightforward educational testing model and testing model that ensures all those admitted to the bar have a baseline understanding of New York law. And there are a few key advantages, three that I'll point out specifically. One is about accessibility. The online self-paced format of the NYLC allows candidates from across the country and around the world with differing schedules and goals to meaningfully engage with New York-specific material. The second advantage is consistency. The NYLE taken after completion of the NYLC ensures a consistent measure of knowledge and understanding of basic principles of New York law across all candidates, regardless of where they earned their J D or L L M degree or the state or country in which they reside. And the third key advantage is equity. Maintaining the current off-cycle administration and format of the NYLC and NYLE integrates well with existing bar preparation curricula and programs. Doing so would not place an undue burden or new, new burdens on law students or law schools. This will be particularly valuable as many law schools are currently working to adapt some of their curricula to achieve better alignment with the goals of the next-gen bar exam over the next three years. Indeed, maintaining the NYLC and NYLE on its current cycle and not adding more testing to the afternoon of the second day of the next-gen bar exam will ensure that both the next-gen bar exam and the NYLE are equitable, equitably administered and do not create additional cognitive load for already overtaxed bartakers. Stacking the two exams on the same day would compromise the effectiveness of bartakers in New York and create an uneven playing field between those taking the next-gen bar in New York versus other states that do not test state-specific law and stack their exams. In addition, it should be noted that stacking the exams would most certainly exacerbate the already tight in-person testing accommodations in New York because a very large number of bartakers seeking admission in New York take the UBE in another state, and they rely on the score portability to New York. So, with such a change, they would have to travel to New York and take the bar exam and the NYLE at the same time in person. And even if the Board of Law Examiners could operationalize such a change at scale, it's hard to imagine that it would not result in a more cramped and arguably suboptimal testing environment, disadvantaging all bar and NYLE takers in New York. Secondly, speaking on the open versus closed book format that's been discussed, the current open book format, in our view, of the NYLE is appropriate for its purpose. It generally aligns with the evolving format of the next-gen bar exam, which rejects the excessive moat memorization model and reflects instead the reality of modern legal practice, where attorneys consult statutes, case law, and reference materials to address legal problems. The development of this, of this format is also consistent with changes in legal education over the past 15 years. With pedagogical innovation in adult learning, critical thinking, and application have come new ways to ensure that learning can take place in an environment that looks different from traditional models, but while still enhancing educational effectiveness. And then lastly, the impact on law school curricula and bar preparation. Law schools in New York currently operate pursuant to a complex web of ABA accreditation standards and New York Court of Appeals rules. The adoption of new and significantly different New York-specific licensing requirements would cause disruption in law school curricula and bar preparation programs. This is particularly the case at a time when our schools are undertaking significant curricular reviews and will be making necessary changes over the next three years to ensure that our students are prepared for the New York, for New York's introduction of the next-gen bar exam in 2028. Accordingly, we believe any concerns about the NYLC and NYLE can be addressed within the current structure, as I previously discussed, and through changes in format and content of CLE program, which my colleague will discuss in just a moment. We recommend, though, however, if the committee were to recommend changes, our ask is that they be implemented over the next several years after 2028, allowing us all sufficient time, lead time for planning and curricular reforms within our institutions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jelani. As of course, deans of the 15 law schools in New York, our students practice law when they graduate in New York, but also in all other jurisdictions around the country. And so we have an interest in ensuring that those who do choose to practice in New York are ready for that. And of course, we want to make sure that our goals are aligned with whatever happens to the New York law exam. But we wanted to point out that the course mandated courses beyond Rule 520.18 already imposes a significant requirement of competency in skills and professional values. Rule 520.18 references the ABA standards and rules of procedure for the approval of law schools, and those standards and rules set out their own requirements in skills and professional values. Therefore, we believe it would be impractical, if not impossible, to implement additional mandatory courses or experiential learning with work exclusively focused on New York law beyond what is already required. In addition, imposing this requirement on J D programs at out-of-state law schools and L L M programs would present substantial obstacles for law schools to provide such focused opportunities for what are maybe some small cohorts within their institutions. Instead of altering pre-admission processes, we support the idea of enhancing post-bar exam and post-bar admission CLE requirements. A focused review of the CLE curriculum in the first year or two of practice featuring specific instruction in New York law and practice and hypotheticals could offer a more meaningful and practical engagement with state law development. This approach would promote continued learning at a time that it's most relevant, during the start of someone's actual legal practice, allow customization based on practice area, and allow those candidates who pass the bar to begin their CLE coursework while their admission is pending. Indeed, modifying the CLE requirements for newly admitted attorneys with added intentionality to include diversified tracks that align with specific practice areas, such as transactional law, civil practice, criminal practice, estate planning, domestic relations, would ensure ongoing, relevant legal education that keeps new attorneys well-versed in the complexities of New York law while promoting specialization, excellence, and professional development. We're not per se suggesting a highly customized CLE program replace the new NYLE. However, one could envision CLE reforms addressing some of the concerns critics have within NYLE while also creating a better system of accountability and ownership of the specialized training of new attorneys. This includes large and small private law firms, corporations, government agencies, and nonprofit legal services providers. Further, while not wanting to add new burdens to the courts, we believe that they are in an excellent position to offer required customized prerecorded CLE programming for newly admitted attorneys who will appear before them. This prerecorded programming could review the general application of civil, criminal, and other specialized practice rules that apply in court proceedings, the unique and specific rules for each of the four judicial departments within the state, and the local rules that judges may impose in the specialized parts over which they preside. This kind of training could be highly beneficial to new lawyers, their clients, and serve the interests of justice. This programming is also something that the court would not expect law schools to undertake. In conclusion, we believe the NYLC and NYLE generally serve their purpose and should be preserved and refined. Rather than imposing new admission burdens, the court should consider CLE enhancements that can better achieve the goals of ensuring new attorney readiness for practice in New York in their earlier years after passing the bar and being admitted to practice. So, thanks again for the opportunity to present these views. We're pleased to answer any questions or provide further written comment as the committee proceeds with its deliberations. We look forward to our continued partnership, and for the record, I will read the names of the 15 deans and law schools. Cinnamon Carlane, President and Dean at Albany Law School. David Meyer, President and Professor of Law at Brooklyn Law School. Todd Brown, Dean and Professor of Law, University of Buffalo School of Law. Melanie Leslie, Dean at Benjamin Cardozo School of Law. Danielle Abbebe, Dean at Columbia Law School. Sudha Sethi, Dean at CUNY School of Law. Jens Olin, Dean at Cornell Law School. Joseph Landau at Fordham University School of Law. Jenny Roberts, Dean at Hofstra University. Anthony Crowell, Dean at New York Law School. Troy McKenzie, Dean at New York University School of Law. Horace Anderson, Dean at the School of Law at Pace University. Jelani Exum, Dean at St. John's University. Terrence Lau, Dean at Syracuse School of Law. And Elena Langen, Dean at Turo Law Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Wow.
If I may, I just want to introduce one additional colleague who's joined us, Natalie Gomez-Velas. She is the dean, the interim dean designate at the CUNY School of Law, and she'll be taking over for Dean Sudha Sethi on July 1. She's joining us today, and she is actually a veteran of the New York State Courts as well.
Welcome and good morning. Okay, Dean Crowell, we're going to hear from other deans, or are we?
That, that is, that is the testimony on behalf of the law schools. We're now happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, so I'll call on the committee members that, if you have any questions. Okay, Judge Glenn?
So, I guess two things. I'm a little puzzled at the notion of needing three years to adjust your curriculum to meet the next gen, since as I understand, the next gen, it's basically teaching the skills that law schools have been teaching and are teaching and are refining all the time about issue spotting and understanding and doing research and et cetera, as opposed to just memorizing black-letter law. So, perhaps someone could say a little more about what, about what that involves. And then I guess the second question, and this is, and this is something that I've been interested in. I don't know how much the rest of the committee, but the, the issue of an opt-out for students who have taken courses, not, not requiring the law schools to teach additional courses, but for students who would have a more in-depth experience of New York law than what they're getting in the New York Law Course or in any subsequent CLE courses. I mean, I teach CLE courses all the time, and we know that people like sit there and do crossword puzzles or do, or do, or do other stuff. So, you know, they, they can be good, but they're really not a substitute for, for in-class learning. So, so the question is, in, in the old days, before the UBE, New York law schools generally taught a number of courses that either focused on New York law or included New York law as major portions of those courses. Lots of, lots of law schools that were teaching criminal law were primarily teaching New York criminal law. And, and obviously, New York procedure was a course that most people took. So, the, and, and because it was tested on the bar exam, those courses were very heavily subscribed. So, so the question is, given that testing on the bar exam incentivizes students to take a real law school course, which I think, I would hope that the deans all agree, is better than any CLE or any brief discussion of the law in, on New York law in, in the course that's given now. Is, is there any disincentive for you, not, not schools around the country, but to, if you're not already offering, or if you are offering, expecting additional enrollment in court, in a course like New York Practice? Or, you know, from my current interest in trust and estates law, which is going to be the single substantive area that's not tested on the, on the next gen, and which is something that, you know, so many people who practice in New York end up, even if they're doing M and A, somebody in their family, some, some neighbor, whatever, because as my colleagues in the Surrogates Association says, not everybody does international transactions, but everybody dies. So, so, so the question is, if there were a, an opt-out, which is to say that if someone takes, let's say, a course in New York Practice, and of course specifically in some area of New York law that is not widely tested, and obviously T and E is one of those, and family law has been one of those as well, you know, would that pose any serious problems for the law schools? Or would you welcome it as a way of actually better preparing your students to practice law in New York than, than, than what we can do given the limited time we have for the New York Law Exam and the New York Law Course?
Dean Roberts, do you want to handle these questions?
I'll take the first one about, and I'm sure my colleagues will, will jump in, but just with respect to your question about the next-gen bar and what we're currently doing in the law school curriculum and why we might need time to ramp up to that, let me offer just one example of why at least some kind of shifting here is going to be necessary. So, the next-gen bar is going to test skills, which of course we do teach in a variety of different ways. But one of the skills is negotiation. I'm going to pick my favorite because I teach a course in negotiation and plea bargaining, that is through a skills lens, and in that case, I have always bemoaned the fact that not, more people don't take it and have access to it in law school. We're all going to need to find a way to expose more students to courses that you, that teach skills of negotiation that might be tested or will be tested on the next-gen bar. But of course, we want to do that through, I would not want every student to have to take my course in plea bargaining, which will, you know, incorporate a lot of New York criminal law and procedure, given my own background, but rather to experience that in different ways through a variety of courses. So, we are adding and piloting this year a court, a business associations course that adds on a skills component in drafting, which we think will be very helpful for those preparing for the next-gen bar. Now, it happens that a lot of our faculty is seeped in New York Practice, and so of course, these things are coming, the, the New York law is coming out in those courses. But these really are significant, significant shifts, more for some law schools than other, others to be sure. And I'll let my colleagues speak to the, the other question about opting out and its related components. Thank you.
Dean Leslie, you want to handle that question, please?
Yes, Judge Glenn, we're soulmates on this because I taught trust and estates at both Cardozo and at NYU Law School for 15 to 20 years, depending on the school, and I understand the differences in New York law on trust and estates and other, other similar state law kinds of topics. So, what I did, what I do in, in trust and estates, it's a general class. We have a lot of our students who will practice who knows where. And so I, I start with the Uniform Probate Code, but then at various intersections, I overlay New York law where it's really important and different, in testing succession, the elective share. I can't remember off the top, but you get the idea. Anywhere where there are New York statutes that are unusually complex, important, and really different from the majority, and so that's how a lot of us handle it. So, in response to your question, would, would I personally, and, and I'm not here, I haven't vetted this answer with the rest of the deans, but my own feeling is, would I personally object to have a But my own feeling is, would I personally object to having a track where if a student. Is takes a certain amount of New York law in law school that they don't have to take an exam? I don't think that in, in general, general, as a general matter, I would say object, I think most of us are already offering New York Practice. And most of us are offering at least two or three, although the schools are very, very different, two or three New York law classes. The question, the devil would be in the details, so what would we demand in terms of, what would the requirement be? How many New York classes would they have to take? The greater that list grows, the more of a problem I have with it because we don't want to create. A situation where someone who's gonna go practice in capital markets or immigration law is suddenly not taking federal courts and all kinds of classes. Because they want to just avoid the New York Bar Exam, so they're taking a disproportionate number of New York classes. So I would be interested to know how many classes and then also would credit be given for classes like mine? Where they, it's a mix, it's a hybrid, right? So they're learning the overall theory of trust and estates law, they're learning enough to be able to land in any state. Pick up statutes, understand them, read them, understand the differences. But there is an emphasis on New York law that I would say is about a quarter to thirty percent of the class. In other words, everywhere it differs. So, oh, another one is antilapse, right? That's a different approach than the, yeah. So I would be in favor if there could be a recognition that in certain classes, like perhaps criminal procedure and trust and estates. If there were, you know, certain topics in those classes where New York law was overlaid. That I think would be probably more useful to a student than just a pure New York class. Because it prepares them for larger practice and for New York practice, given that they're, we don't know where they'll end up. So those would be my two questions back really is how, it would really depend to be on how much are we requiring? And will we recognize so-called hybrid classes where they learn the general law? That enables them to practice anywhere, but also hone in on the New York differences.
Yeah, if I, if I can make this a conversation, I know that there was someone else who was going to speak and I don't mean to interrupt them, but. I mean, this is a conversation and the question is. Could there be an opt out? Would that be valuable for students? I mean, there are students who are great test takers and there are students who are wonderful lawyers and terrible test takers. Who often are delayed in the entry into the profession, just because they're not good test takers for a lot of reasons. And we know that there's, you know, racial disparity in that, and there certainly has been historically. So I, I, I am not coming at it with a, there should be this or that, it seems to me that a course in New York Practice. Is something that law schools should offer that I, I understand, and I think maybe it was from Mr. Piaz's excellent paper. That the, that the, the vast majority of students in New York law schools go on to practice in New York. So, and I don't know whether that's true or not, but if it is, then New York Practice really is something and, and. And you learn it by doing it and by applying it, not just by, you know, studying it for an exam. I, I would certainly think that what you're doing in trust and estates, and I would certainly think that what Judge Roberts is doing in criminal procedure. And, and I love that, I love the idea of teaching negotiation skills through these substantive courses because we learn by doing, you know, we. I mean, we, a, a lot of what has happened over the past thirty or forty years, and I, I want to take a little credit for Cooney. Which I think has always been in the forefront of thinking about pedagogy and different styles of adult learning and so forth is, is the. Layering of how you actually learn the law and learn to apply it and learn what you don't know and where to go for it, so. You know, it, it might be New York Practice and, and one of three or four courses, which could be criminal procedure, whatever. Which would again allow the student who thinks they know what they want to be doing to get more depth in that area. And to learn it better than they're gonna learn it in what we're offering them as an alternative. I, I want to ask one other question, and again, I apologize for taking up the time of, of whoever was next, I'm sure that we'll give you time.
Judge Glenn, would you, would you mind if I just respond to close the loop on your last comment? I think it might be very helpful if we can take that back to the deans as a whole. Because I don't wish to speak on behalf of people on, on something we haven't thoroughly discussed.
No, of course.
And I think it might be a, I think there'll be a lot of receptiveness to this, but I think it would be nice for us to be able to talk as a group about. A vision for what that might look like, and that might be more helpful to you, so. Can we follow up with a written response, further thinking about the question of bypassing the exam? Thanks.
And I'm guessing Columbia and NYU are not gonna offer New York Practice, but whatever.
The other thing we have to think about there is the impact it might have on out-of-state schools, right? They, they would all.
So, so that's, so that's a question, I mean, I have not blessedly kept up with all of the ABA requirements. But I know that there's a lot more opportunity for remote learning and I was, and so one question was. Not to unduly advantage, I guess, students in New York law schools over others, although everybody else would be, would be taking what already exists. You know, would you be able to offer and to, and to essentially sell to out-of-state law schools who had a considerable number of students? Who intended to practice in New York, you know, a three-credit course in New York Practice or whatever, so that they didn't have to offer it themselves. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about incentivizing, you know, students in New York and also giving people a deeper learning experience. And, and I, and I understand the, you know, the economics of all of this, but it does seem to me that it might be something you could sell. And it's permitted within ABA requirements now.
Thanks, we'll take that back and we'll, we'll respond, we'll put our heads together and give you more to work with on that, thank you so much for that question.
Thank you. Michael, did you have a question?
I did, thank you. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the recommendation regarding the New York Law Exam. And, and I think Dean Lau, you, you hinted maybe at some of the criticism that's been leveled at the exam. Yeah, I'm sure you know that our leaders, some law professors, many students have criticized the. The exam as superficial, as, as not difficult enough. And there, there've been concerns about that. I, I wonder what, what your experience is with the exam, I, I wonder what you're hearing from your students about the level of difficulty? Whether they feel that it meaningfully prepares them. For, for the practice of law, and I wonder what you're hearing from your colleagues as well, including those of you who have colleagues who teach New York Practice and, and other New York Law Courses. So if you could share some of that, I, I appreciate that, and if you have thoughts for. If the exam could be made more difficult, at least one appellate division justices call for sort of a, a more weighty exam. If you have any thoughts about that, I, I'd appreciate that as well.
I, I, I'll, I'll jump in and then maybe others have thoughts as well. I, I would say that the NYLE is not perfect, and we all acknowledge that it's not perfect. But the point we're making is number one, we should ask ourselves, you know, what's the problem we're trying to fix? Because if the, if the problem we're trying to fix is to ensure that our law graduates are. Ready to practice in any area of New York law the day they pass the bar. Then, you know, a, a more rigorous or, or difficult bar exam for, for the NYLE isn't gonna accomplish that. Because New York law is just too varied in its, in its complexity. You know, we kind of joked about this, you could spend a career and still not understand New York City rent control law. And, and do we want all New York law grads to understand New York City rent control law? You know, if you look at all the different distinctiveness in New York law, whether it's the differences in double jeopardy. Or the gravity knife law in criminal law, or when you talk about New York civil rights law. The Gender Expression Nondiscrimination Act, the reproductive health law, the clean slate law. Or in the housing and real estate with rent stabilization, rent control, eviction in some New York cities. Or the differences in family law, child marriage law, no-fault divorce. Education law, business and employment law, gun laws, environmental law, transportation law, taxation, the list goes on and on. So, you know, what, what's, what's the goal? Do we want all New York law school grads to know everything about all these areas in New York law that are different? It's an impossible task, you would, you would spend six years in law school. The way that students spend six or seven years in medical school in order to specialize in a particular area. And as a society, we have, we've said, we don't want that, we want a general JD degree. That students can undertake and then be ready to practice in any number of areas, in any number of jurisdictions. And once they've made that choice of area and jurisdiction, then they get the specialized training, either through tutoring or mentoring, CLE and so forth. So, yes, the NYLE is not perfect and we support, you know, continuing to reform it, looking at it. Refining it in a way that perhaps gives us time to adjust to the next gen, you know, as, as, as was previously discussed. The reason we need time to adjust is because for the next three years, we are preparing students to take both the UBE and next gen. Because of the way next gen has rolled out in various fits and starts, not to mention what's happening in California. We know that two states have opted out of next gen completely, so as law schools with students, you know, getting ready to take the bar, both in February and August in fifty states. We have a monumental task to prepare students and, and to add in a totally different. And untested NYLE on top of next gen being rolled out, we fear would really have unintended consequences for New York takers. I'll let anyone else jump.
Yeah, I want to add, thank you, Terrence. I want to seize on something you said, which was, should we be making the New York exam more difficult? I would say the problem isn't that it's too easy currently, the problem it seems to me is that it's not good. It's not a good exam, so that what do we mean by that? We know that with the next gen bar, they've spent a lot of time with psychometricians, professional scientists who understand. How to develop a robust and good exam. We do not have the confidence that the current New York Bar Exam was developed in that way, and if you take a look at it. I'm guessing it wasn't. And so to me, the question isn't necessarily, should it be harder, but should it be better? Should time be taken to really approach it with scientists to make sure that we know, if we first ask, as Terrence said, what is our objective? Because I'm not sure that's clear from the current, I don't think they know. What is our objective? What are the key things you want that New York Bar Exam to test? Keep it simple, and then how do we make sure this test does that? How do we make sure the students feel when they take it like it's not a nonsense exam with questions that are hard to decipher? Questions that sometimes don't make sense? That are, that are sort of capable of more than one answer and they're sitting there in their heads going, well, I could argue this and I could argue that, but it's not well-written. Right, how do we make it clean? And how do we make sure it's a, we, we, we are clear on our objectives and that we know this exam is a furtherance of those objectives? So I think that to me, from where, where I've heard is the real issue, not is it too easy now and should it be harder?
Well, can I just ask you a question about that then? Would, would you think it would be appropriate for this committee to recommend that the Board of Law Examiners or whatever group hires psychometricians to, to help craft that exam?
I would a hundred percent.
And I, I'd like to add to that, that not just a psychometrician, but to, to bring in someone who is a, an expert in adult learning theory and approaches. Because the psychometrician can tell us about the validity of the test, but what next gen has done is, is really. Recognize the incredible advances that we've made over the last twenty years in understanding that adults are not like children. Rote memorization is not the way to go with adults, that's not how they retain information and it's not helpful to practice. And this kind of circles back to your original question, which I guess I'll answer with a little spin. So I took the New York Bar Exam in nineteen ninety-five and so it was the old regime that I know there is some. Maybe nostalgia for that's, there is a belief that that. Loosened, fully-formed, perfectly-practice-ready lawyers onto the world, and I can tell you, walking into the Legal Aid Society Criminal Defense Division. You know, a, a year, I clerked for a year and then going across the street to state court, I was not fully formed having taken that exam. And, you know, I, I was fully formed having taken certain courses in law school that I thought would help me. In my practice, but having flexibility to make those decisions as an adult in, in law school was incredibly helpful. And then there were things I did in practice, you know, to ramp up and, and get, and get better at it. But I could not walk into a courtroom and, you know, fully apply all of the rules of evidence for my evidence class on day one. Nor could I walk into a courtroom and recite criminal procedure law. It, it's, you know, but I did know how to look it up. And I think that's, that's really what we want to focus on, how do we want to, you know, how do we make profession-ready lawyers? Who are, have learned how to learn and what the responsible way to practice is.
Interestingly, though, the exam you took in nineteen ninety-five had actually been evaluated by psychometricians. And it found to be, and was found to be valid and reliable, unlike the current New York Law Exam, which was, as I understand, it never tested. By psychometricians.
And, and I agree completely with Dean Leslie that, that evaluating the current exam might be a starting point to begin with. Before we throw out the bathwater with the baby or the baby with the bathwater, I'm not sure which way that goes, but. But also, it, it, the old exam, yes, that's true. And that meant it was a valid test in that it wasn't biased in its determination of who should pass, et cetera. And that it, it, it sort of tested the basic goals that had been determined at that time in the early nineties. Goals are different now, the world's different, legal practice is different. So we've all come a very long way in legal education, acknowledging that by adding so much more in the way of skills and practice and experiential learning amongst other things. And just a variety of areas that students can pick from.
And I wanted to just add to that as well, I'm echoing what my colleague said, but I just also wanted to make a point about the format. When you think about rigor, I think there's been some discussion that rigor, in order to increase rigor, it means you have to have a closed book exam. Or you're adding length, or you're adding questions, or it's focused on memorization. And, you know, full disclosure, I, I'm new to New York, so I did not take the New York Bar. However, so I'm speaking to you from the standpoint of just understanding education. And the advances that have been made in legal education in law schools, we've been sort of behind the ball in adjusting our curricula, curricula to. To advances in understanding about adult learners and, but we're getting there. But one thing that we've come to understand, as, as was already stated, you know, rote memorization is not a good way to prepare someone to actually practice. But also that some of these superficial measures of rigor, like whether it's memorization or even closed book exams. Or not having an exam online, that, that's really out of step with our understanding of, of how to assess. So that you can have very rigorous exams, and by rigor, what I mean is teaching to the outcomes that you're looking for. As Dean Leslie was mentioning before, so baseline competency or whatever the determination is, but that can be done even in an open book format. It can be done online, so just, you know, cautioning first not to confuse rigor for a specific type of format.
Yeah, that's really important. I'd like to add, I just want to answer the question about what students do say about the exam. I think a number of students who I've spoken to about it. Didn't think that there was necessarily clear alignment between what the New York Law Course and the test was asking for. So I think, I think evaluating the, the test itself, the assessment tool itself can help refine the, the New York Law Course as well. And I, you know, give, give, give a roadmap to that in some sense, I think that's positive. But I'll also say, other students have said that it reinforced what they had learned in class, which I thought was great, that there is New York law being taught in a number of different ways. And that, I, I do want to mention that not everybody passes the New York Law Exam. And so it is something that we emphasize must be taken seriously, and I think our students do. And I, I do think that there's a series of steps that can be taken to both improve the, the assessment tool itself. As well as the course that, that may be exactly what helps to benefit the process we're discussing right now in terms of. Ensuring that there is a, a familiarity with New York law and, and a readiness for students to graduate and go out into the world. And, and be able to understand. The different context in which they might be working and how to apply, apply the law and how to, most importantly. Make sure they have the capacity to identify where the law resides and to find it and use it.
Thank you, Ulysse, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have two questions, one is very much in keeping with the theme of the last several minutes of conversation around the New York Law Exam. And it's, it's really, assuming that the purpose of the next generation bar exam and the UBE before it. Is to ensure minimum competence and that the local component. Is for something else, right? To Dean Leslie's point, you know, defining the objective, if we were to define the objective as, for instance. You know, making certain that students were aware or graduates were aware of, of important distinctions between New York law and other jurisdictions and how to. Identify those things and where to find the law. Do the deans have a strong view? You know, now this is a bit of a false choice, but assuming the choice was. Do the deans have a strong view, um, you know, now this is a bit of a false choice, but assuming the choice was evaluate and reform the current New York law exam or something that looks very similar to it, coupled with uh, you know, the, the New York law course or something that looks very similar to it versus a post licensure CLE uh requirement adjustment. Um, i- i- is there a preference as between those two things eh, with respect to what we think would better achieve the objective? Um, you know, as defined, you're assuming that the, the New York component, eh, component wasn't, was not intended to be, you know, a sort of belts and suspenders check on minimum competence, but had some other purpose. Um, so that's the first question. Um, and then the second question is really just confirming slash clarifying something that Dean Jefferson Exum said. Um, in her testimony, I think she was, I, I couldn't recall if she was talking specifically about the current state of play with respect to requirements or the way we think things will look when the, the next gen rolls out. But I think she said that New York currently is the only state that requires both a course and an exam. And I just wanted to confirm that's, um, I haven't done that review and I just wanted to confirm that, that, you know, whether, whether we were talking about that's a current state, that's something we anticipate in the future. Um, and clarify that. Thank you.
Dean Jefferson Exum, you want to take the last question first and then?
Sure. Yes, that is what I said, um, as the current state of things. Uh, so we don't know what's to, if there are plans to change that in other jurisdictions, but currently New York is the only place that requires um, both the course and the exam.
Okay. Does somebody want to field the first question?
I got a little lost on all the questions. What was, which one was first, please?
Okay, do you want me to try to reframe it or?
The first one was about, do we have a view on whether, no, I think that was the second one, whether we have a view on whether.
On, on post licensure CLE versus the form of the New York uh law exam?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a uniform view of that one. Um, I think we've been focused on the concern that the New York portion of the bar exam not blow up into something that is unadministrable and not effective and, and perhaps creates a stress and, and, and more stress and, and isn't effective. So, so I don't know, can we say? Yeah, I think, I think there's, eh, I don't think people, again, someone interrupt me if I misassess uh the, the spirit of the group. I don't think people are completely opposed to a New York portion of the exam that would be a half day and that would be remote and that would be valid. Um, I do think there's a fair amount of support for the idea that we could move all this to CLE. Um, that could be another thing. If you're really interested in how this falls out, we could take back to the group and then follow up with any millon.
Let me, let me address that a little more fully, um, building on what Dean Leslie said. I, I think that um, a couple of things. So to avoid confusion, I think that um, our assumption is that there'll be some form of a, of testing of New York law. Uh, we support the continued, uh, the continuation of the New York law exam itself. We understand that there um, will be refinements. Uh, we support refinements and would like to work with you on that. We do not support the administration of a New York portion on the same day as the second day of the New York, I'm sorry, of the next gen bar. We think that the way it's been administered is effective. Um, both from a general operational standpoint, that you have New York schools that take that exam, but also schools from out of state. It works nicely uh for a number of reasons, which I believe the Board of Law Examiners has explained in terms of uh facility capacity. But also I think uh it, it, there is an equitable approach in ensuring that uh, students who are taking the next gen nationally uh have no additional cognitive load, just because they happen to be in New York state. With that, let me, eh, let me address the, the, the uh, the CLE component. We do support um, uh, a serious look at the current requirements for early-stage lawyers um, at the CLE requirements. We think that there is opportunity to address some of the very concerns that have been addressed through this process specifically. Um, uh, we, we will say that there are any number of practice areas that our graduates go into. Um, in some ways, there, they go into roles that are litigating and roles that are, that are transactional or advisory or in compliance. And so um, I think there should be a recognition that the paths that lawyers takes, the careers that they are occupying with a JD degree um, and bar admission are many. And that there can be some variability in what the CLE requirements are for early-stage lawyers. But something that provides thoughtful guidance, particularly if we're concerned about procedure, thoughtful guidance. And I think official guidance on how to engage with different um, uh, different tribunals. I will say that it's, while understanding the CPLR is important, there are any number of different rules that apply by judicial department in the state, by individual courts within those departments and with individual parts within those courts. It is so complex that it would be beyond any law school to undertake and something that I don't think the judiciary should want a law school to undertake because of the nuance judges and, and of, of the court system itself. So I do think that's an opportunity um, to baseline some of that uh with CLE. And I can tell you, when I was a, a new lawyer, I went to a law school out of state. Uh, I did not have the benefit of a, per se, a uh, uh, New York-specific courses. But, but I focused on finding CLEs that gave me that, that uh insight into how to practice in the New York courts. And I think that's important. Um, and I also think that although, uh, as you said, Judge Glenn, you're concerned about um, people who go into a CLE and might do a crossword puzzle. I think there's ways to avoid, to avoid that. I also think there's, oh, oh, there are ways to bring about greater uniformity and um, greater substance across CLE providers, so that there's, there's weight and seriousness to what is presented. So I think, I think thinking about reformatting those early-stage requirements is really important and giving more paths um, for how those early-stage requirements can just make a better bar, a better profession because we recognize people do more than just litigate.
Thank you. Michael, did you still have, did you have another question or a follow-up question?
I did. Uh, if it, it's not a follow-up question, but if I could ask uh, one other question about the, about the exam structure. So uh, as I understand it, one notable difference between the UBE and next gen is the elimination of essay questions on the next gen exam. Eh, and I'm wondering, in your view, is that something the committee should be concerned about? That there won't be any essay questions on the bar exam? Is that something that you're concerned about?
Uh, uh, it's not, I don't think it's the elimination. There will be fewer and they'll be broken up into shorter pieces because the students are supposed, the, the exam takers are supposed to be grappling with the material that they're given, like real lawyers, you know, here you have fa- you've come at this stage where you found the law. Um, and it's a bit broken up, but I, I do, I, I saw some of those reports that were quite alarmist, that we're not going to have essays anymore. And I, it does not appear that they're actually correct, that that's completely gone. Um, there's quite a bit of writing on it still. And so, no, I don't think that's a concern.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Judge Glenn?
Um, a couple of quick questions. Um, one is, um, I, I absolutely agree with Dean Crowell that um, looking at the post-graduation CLE stuff is important and it allows people to track and you can do good CLEs. Um, and, and so I, I would just like to ask, and I assume that you'll agree, um, that it doesn't have to be all or nothing. I mean, we can do that as well as make the exam better. Because if the point is to optimally prepare um, recent graduates to serve clients, and that's at the end of the day, the point, and also to serve the court system, um, then the more, the better. And the more different ways, which is again, what we know from the pedagogy of adult learning and learning in general, is that layering and repetition is like, is like the way you learn stuff. So um, so to not do it as an either or, I mean, a- again, I assume that that's something that you would all agree on, but maybe you want to come back and tell us that. Um, the second is with regard to not putting more burden on the law schools, but to say that we had the benefit of, uh, of meeting with Deborah Merritt, who I'm sure you all know. Um, and who is really an expert in all of this and has been doing this work for a long time and is working with a lot of states right now. Um, and, and who says writing a good uh short answer question is the hardest single thing to do in the world. So really understands that difficulty and, and you know, she suggested uh with regard to um, improving, I don't want to say fixing, improving the New York law exam. Um, really getting like four or five subject matter experts to design it as opposed to the way it's being designed right now. And I think that would involve drawing on the law schools. And so I assume that the law schools would be willing to supply those, those experts to do that. And then the final question is informational and you may not have this, but um, when we met with the, with the law examiners about this, um, I asked about what information they had, if any, about disparate impact um, of the New York law exam. Um, whether by race or by age uh, or by gender or by SES. And they said they didn't have it. So I'm wondering if you have any experience from your own uh populations or whatever that would enlighten us about that. Cause obviously if we're talking about equity and it's falling more heavily on one group than another, we would need to know that.
So, so I can take that. Um, about, about Professor Merritt, uh, I'm aware that she had spoken to you all and um, I, I think, I, I actually think there's a great deal of expertise that goes into creating the New York law course. Those are some of those people you might start with.
Yeah.
Thinking about the questions because they give those lectures and, and I'm not sure how frequently those lectures are refreshed. But, but you know, you could, you could arguably appoint a faculty to both teach that course and also to work on such questions, you know, consistent with the guidance of psychometric um, uh, measures. So I think that that's an approach. I, I also think that um, in terms of disparate impact with the NYLE, uh, I'm not sure that uh, any of the deans have ever spoken to that. So I'm not sure that we have that, that experience. But as I said, um, not everyone passes. Part, part of the issue is not every, not every one of our graduates necessarily tells us if they didn't pass the first time they took it. That information, unlike the bar exam, is not given to us.
Got it.
So I don't have a roster of who passed, who, who failed. If I did, we would, we would have done such an analysis, I think.
It's, it's interesting that nobody seems to want to collect this information. So I, I, I take that for what it's worth.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the panel of deans? Okay. This has been great. We appreciate your time and efforts. And um, I think uh, what we have, um, the next testimony, is it eleven? Do we want to try to move that up a little bit, folks? Or if possible, Lisa, is that uh? Oh, you, you, you need to put your mic there. Yeah.
Mr. Pierre is here. He's ready. If you want to take five minutes and come back or?
Yeah, why don't we, if we could, because I've got to make a quick call. Can we take ten minutes? Is that, is that fair?
Ten fifteen?
Anybody?
Yeah, we, we also all really think that, I, I think this is really a very useful conversation and um, both enlightening and encouraging.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yes, we're grateful for your time and we'll get back to you on that one area of questioning, Judge Glenn, okay?
And I want, yeah, can I just join in and say thank you so much for your interest in hearing from us. It really, knowing that we can partner on this is a, is a great thing. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, so why don't we pick up at um, let's see, we want to pick up at ten twenty?
Sure. Ten twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. So do we, do we have everybody?
Um, yes, Megan will be on when she.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Good morning, Mr. Piazza.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the committee for this opportunity to s- to speak in front of a bunch of esteemed legal professionals in the field, as well as yourself.
Thank you.
I, as a recent graduate from Toral Law in December of two thousand twenty-four, I don't have much of these credentials. However, I have taken all the exams and passed them. So I believe I could offer my own insight, as well as those of some of my peers, to help bring a perspective to the committee's attention. As for the law schools, laws, as most of us know, law schools have strayed away from teaching New York law specifically, or at least making it a requirement. The New York State Bar Association itself made this task force in two thousand nineteen. And in this report they released, they surveyed one thousand six hundred seventeen law school graduates seeking admission. Of those who responded, forty-eight percent said they didn't take a course in New York law. Eighteen percent weren't even sure if the school had it. So that leaves thirty-four percent of people who have known that their school offered this course. Seventy-three percent of those people, that's seventy-three percent of this thirty-four percent didn't take the course, even though half of them were going to practice in New York or at least had the intent to. That leaves twenty-seven percent who did take the course. And of the twenty-seven percent, only thirty-five percent said that it benefited them. They felt that it benefited them in some way. So if you do the math, that's thirty-five percent, twenty-seven percent of thirty-four percent of one thousand six hundred people who were surveyed. That's less than fifty people. It's not, I can't even blame the law schools for, for this either, because they're, they're adjust, they're still adjusting to the New York adopting the uniform bar exam, which the NCBE itself acknowledged has general legal principles, majority law. A bunch of study resources also say like, this is not state-specific law that's tested. These are general principles that you have to drill into your head. And if that weren't bad enough, the NCBE announced that they were going to phase out topics such as family law, trusts and estates and secure transactions, starting in July two thousand twenty-six. And family law is not a small topic in New York. Twenty-five percent of all cases between January and March that have been brought to New York trial courts were in the family courts. A hundred and five thousand, to be exact, and that number's going up. This was in March when I looked at it. So these are not small topics for New York state. And that's where the New York law course comes in. The New York law course, for many pe- of these students who did not take these New York courses for one reason or another, this is their only chance to learn New York law. It's online, it's asynchronous, so it won't conflict with their schedules. And it's not reliant on a law school's choices of what they want to do with their curriculum. They can choose to be as, they can choose to lean as much into the UBE as they want. The students who are graduating will still have this opportunity through the New York law course. And in addition to that, they have the outline that's given to them in the course. And they have the lecture notes that's given to them, which they can use not only for whatever exam New York wants to place, whether it be through the New York law exam or any future implementation of it. They have this for their future practice too. I, I know for a fact that I did not learn about a New York healthcare proxy, for example, until I took the New York law course. As generous as I was, as, as generous as my law school was to have professors who were also willing to teach New York law in addition to UBE topics, I still didn't know what a healthcare proxy was until I took the New York law course. That's pretty, it's a pretty important topic too, because even though I might not come across this, my, my grandparents certainly will. They're, they're, they're at that age where that's something like that's important to them. And as a legal professional myself, I wish to at least have that opportunity to tell them, okay, this is what you need to know. So for that reason, I think along with the task force to actually ask this question about the New York law course's helpfulness, seventy-one percent of them found that the course was at least somewhat helpful. It was helpful or somewhat helpful. Now, I, I do concede that it doesn't teach everything. It, there's some things that, you know, the law schools haven't taught me that the, the course hasn't really taught me either. For example, how to take a deposition. If, if someone asked me, oh, just take this deposition, I, I'll probably look at them with that deer in the headlights look that some people might be familiar with. It's important to know that even the notary public can. It's important to know that even the notary public can. Administer those kinds of depositions in the state because they are legally authorized to do so. And with, after they take their notary public exam, maybe a few months working with someone, they they can. Do it the standard they they know what to do. And here I am, probably. Three years after law school, having studied for the bar exam, I still, I I'd have to look it up. I I can't just say, oh, this is what I do. I I have to, I have to give myself some more time to research it, which. With the months that I have to spend. Waiting for my application to process, I feel like there could be a better use of my time. So I do concede that the course itself has some improvements that should be made. But that doesn't mean we need to take the whole thing apart. I think the New York law course itself is. Has a solid format because even people outside of state can take its asynchronous format. As for the New York law exam, I think there are very, there are some parallels to that. It's also an online test. It's inexpensive. It's fifty dollars compared to whatever you have to pay for the bar exams laptop fees. However, I do agree that the law exam, the New York law exam. Test strategy more than law as I saw someone say. And these are both corroborated by online accounts as well as the task force's own survey. Which said that seventy four percent of people found the law exam somewhat challenging or not challenging at all, the New York law exam. And I can't get out of my head certain comments saying, don't waste your time studying. Bare minimum preparation. You can find just about anything in the outline. It's more a test of strategy. Because I I lived through that. I, you know, just look at the table contents, find the topic, done. And then after the exam, it probably flies out of my head and it's not going to carry over with me to practice. At the same time, I do get. How the bar exam itself can be very, very stressful, even the NBC NCBE acknowledges that. And I, I even I am in a privileged situation because I'm not like some of these test takers who are, for example. Single parents, living paycheck to paycheck, recovering addicts, anyone dealing with the loss of a loved one. I I was very fortunate and I still found the bar exam somewhat stressful. For that reason, I think that trying to have a complete overhaul on top of. The existing bar exam, which already isn't really, isn't really teaching New York law specifically, is is it's not going to help. As much as it's going to hurt people willing to share their experiences or the legal profession's benefit. I think personally, instead, we should try to. Offer a compromise. I think that the. Court should consider going back to. An option where students could instead take a more comprehensive New York focused law part. And choose to forego the essay part of the uniform bar exam. Because this means they can teach, they, people who want to stay in New York, as many people who take the New York bar exam do. They can take the New York law exam. A more comprehensive version, not have to worry about. The law of nowhere essays and plus without without family law. Or other topics that are important to New York state. And those who still want to take the UVE to transfer their scores anywhere else, they're free to do so. They can take a more condensed version of the New York law exam similar to what we have now. I overall, I feel nervous. Because if a client calls me and asks me a question about New York law, how am I going to apply the knowledge that I learned in in law school? Take preparing for this bar exam. I, it's very, it's troubling. Family member calls me, someone tells me he takes this deposition. I. Trust the Court of Appeals and the committee to listen to the concerns I concerns I have, as well as those in worse positions than me that wants to become lawyers. To. He these concerns and to. Help. A. Help provide an option that would take this burden off of law schools and and students alike while also. Prepare, helping to better prepare us for what we will face in our legal profession and our legal careers and and who we meet. I want to thank the committee for this opportunity and I'm willing to take any questions that anyone has at this point. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we thank you. Judge Glenn, do you have a question?
I have a question and I have an appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Piazza. Not only for appearing and for speaking so frankly, but also for your written submission, which I thought was really excellent.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Really, a really thoughtful, good job. So I was taken by two points that you made and I just want to make sure. That that I have them right and that and that if I do, that we register them as part of what you said. What one is. That. No matter what kind of law you go into. You end up giving legal advice to other people in areas that are not your. You know, so the, the example you gave about your grandparents and healthcare proxies, although I should say we should all have healthcare proxies. It'll all be hit by a bus. No matter how young we are. That that that, that as a young person going into the practice of law, you see that that's something that's going to happen, that your. That your family members or your neighbor is going to ask you about a divorce or about a custody problem or about a will or about a whatever. So. So the the notion of. Of some general knowledge about these areas that sort of every every family in New York. Is going to have issues with, whether they're your family or your neighbor or whatever, is 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 part of the, it's part of what lawyers do, even though it's not. What we recognize they're doing and what they don't, not what they get paid for. So if if I'm right about that, that you are asking. To to have a a minimum competence in the areas that you know you're going to be asked about. Even though you may choose to practice, you know, international trade law or something like that.
Yes, I would, yes, I would argue even further that there's this expectation of lawyers that they have this kind of common knowledge. Because even, even if someone says, oh, they're they're specializing in criminal law, they're. They're going to have family who says, oh, well, you, you did all this. You took the bar exam. You should know at least something or at least know someone. Who would have this kind of knowledge. And I think with this expectation, I think we need to, you know. Bring ourselves to this understanding that, well, maybe we're going to have to leave our comfort zones every now and then.
And then I guess the second thing, which I I think I heard from you and maybe you could say a little more about it was. And and I heard a little bit about it from the deans as well, who understandably want to shift this into the CLE system. But the but the idea of being able to use the period between taking the bar exam and admission. To kind of turbocharge your knowledge in particular areas and presumably at this point, you know what you want to do. Maybe you have a job offer already, or at least you know where you're looking. And and whether. Although we're not charged with obviously redesigning the CLE system, whether there might be. Some real interest in in looking at it and and offering. Some really good CLE subject matter courses in New York law in that interim period between. The bar exam and admission so that so that people could really use it and and have it at the ready. Is is that? Did I get what you said right? And is that what you would support?
Yes, I would, I would say that as long as it doesn't interfere with preparation for the bar exam or any other complications someone may have in their life. Because ob- obviously, no one, no one lives in a bubble. I I do think a comfortable amount of. Something to do to help better prepare us for practice would be a big asset, especially if. We're able to earn some of our CLEs and not have to worry about it. Within the two-year deadline that we get.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael, were you, were you, your hands?
Yes, I, thanks and and thank you, Mr. Piazza, for your testimony. I I think it's really helpful. To hear from people who are just just gone through the experience, who are very familiar with 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 all the pieces of the exam and and the law school experience. I just want to make sure that I understand your testimony and and your proposal. So if I if I hear you correctly, it sounds like you thought. The New York law course was valuable, that the, that that what, what what you were provided, the notes and I and I absolutely understand that. The notes you took away from it, as well as the materials would be something that would be valuable to you day to day in practice. So that's a positive. The exam wasn't clear to me what you were saying about that, whether that was. Whether you thought that was particularly helpful. It sounds like there were, you're aware of people who are basically saying it's it's a joke. We, it's more about strategy than the exam, but I wasn't sure in in terms of just the existing regime, the UVE, whether you were recommending any changes to it. But my my second question is, it it sounded like you were saying there ought to be kind of an off ramp in New York for people who don't want a portable score. But who simply want a a New York law license. And I wonder if you could just, if that's right, if I if I understood you correctly. You just expand a little bit on what you think that would look like.
Yes, of course. I I I was saying that if someone just wants to practice in New York and not have to deal with the hundreds of dollars you have to pay. To transfer to the scores to each state, which is a hurdle for someone like me who grew up middle class. And has to function mainly off of whatever scraps I can carry and. Whatever my parent is in my parents' checking account. I think that having this New York specific. Component would likely emulate even New York's past implementation of the bar exam, which they had the multiple choice. That was from the NCBE. At the same time, they had their own New York state specific essays and performance tests. Florida does this now too, and they had a recent announcement saying that with the next gen exam, they were going to have a Florida specific day. I I think that. If we want to make it more rigorous, the exam, we should have this option for people who. Only wish to practice in New York for the time being, at least until they can get on their feet in the legal profession. To take this test as well as forego the need to understand this law of nowhere for the essays. Because, as I mentioned before, the next gen is taking out family law as well as secure transactions. As well as trusts and states, all of which have a major part in this state's court system. Thank you.
You, Liz, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not sure how many recent grads we're going to get a chance to talk to, so I'm going to ask you a question that's not directly related to your testimony, but. It's something you probably went through, which is. Some some faculty or members of my law school have have talked a little bit about the challenge of. The admission process post-bar. So what what I guess I'm I'm curious about is what, I don't know if this is true, but I've been told that the amount of time it takes New York. To get a student, you know, get a person actually admitted to the bar, and I I just can't remember because this happened to me in nineteen ninety six. After you take the bar exam, you've been informed that you passed the bar exam, that it takes an unusually long time to actually become a member of the bar. And I think that's right. I think I passed the bar in, you know, July or whatever. I got my score in September or something. And then I don't think I became a member of the bar until the following summer. And and I I wonder what you remember about that experience and whether there was anything about the New York law course or New York law exam. That you think could either exacerbate or or simplify that. In other words, if it's. If it's bad in our jurisdiction in terms of how long it's taking us to get our law grads into law admission, bar admission. If there's anything in this process we could be doing around the New York component that you think would be, would help streamline that, would make it easier. So first, maybe, you know, did you have any difficulty, you know, navigating that? Was the character and fitness process onerous? Did it take too long? What what can you remember about that process?
Well, actually, I'm still going through it. I applied, I submitted my formal application last month, I believe. The last week of April, probably a few days after I got news that I passed the bar exam. I, the appellate division sent me this email saying. With this checklist of everything that you have to do. So I made sure to read that thoroughly and have everything processed. Because the moral character affidavits, they do take some weeks to get back. From the people you want to recommend you, as well as other paperwork that you. Want to spend at least a couple of weeks of advance preparing for when, if if you do pass. And that's the thing too. Because you don't know if you're going to pass the bar exam, yet you still have to have this paperwork in order for what, if you do. If you, if you don't, this paperwork will probably be sitting there for a few months, which. I believe might complicate things a bit for whoever doesn't pass.
What department is this, Mr.?
The second, I'm in Suffolk County.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I I'm still going through it. I I don't really have a framework for how long it will take me to get through this process. Because I haven't heard back from them since I submitted, I think, a one-page correction to my application. And until then, I'm pretty much seeking legal intern positions or probably just. Waiting until I get news about my license to start getting out there.
Got it. Thank you.
As for the, as for how law schools can streamline it, I I believe we are, we as a community. Can definitely help each other get off, get off our feet as well. I think if. If the New York Board of Law Examiners wants to go through with a rework of their law course. I do think there is an opportunity for schools to pick up this material, possibly teach it in the same manner themselves. If they want students to have an in-person. I guess substitute for this online asynchronous, because not everyone can learn well through that format. I understand that. And I even think that we could incentivize professors themselves to teach this if if the Board of Law Examiners wants to give CLE. Opportunities for professors to essentially retain new law, new New York law in their heads. Because they're picking up, they're picking up New York law as they're teaching it themselves. They, because. The teacher-student relationship, the teacher learns as well as the student. They they're learning New York laws. There's probably something that they didn't even know if that comes up. So I think we could all cooperate, both. People who manage the New York law course and people who are in teaching in law schools, people who are managing teachers at law schools. I think, I think we are all definite, there's definitely an open forum for communication there.
Thank you. Judge Glenn, did you have another question or?
Oh, I forgot to put my, put my hand down, sorry.
Okay, any other questions from? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Piazza. We appreciate you taking the time to come to speak to us and testify. And we will consider everything that you've said.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I greatly appreciate it.
If I were, if I were hiring someone, which I'm not, because I'm, because I'm not in that position anymore, I would hire you in a New York minute.
Oh, I I appreciate it.
And good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what do we have now? We've got a little bit, ten forty seven. Do you want to take a break? And then I guess our next individuals, there's three individuals that are going to come in. From Unlock the Bar at eleven ten. Is it, okay, so why don't we?
Time to do some email.
Convene at the eleven ten. How's that sound?
Perfect. Thank you.
We'll see you then. Okay, do we have everybody? All our members, everybody's here, because I don't get everybody's picture up there. Okay, great. So why don't we, why don't we start? Okay, who would like to speak first?
Great, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
So first, thank you. Thank you very much to each of you members of the advisory committee for inviting us to offer a public testimony today. On New York State Bar Admissions Processes. My name is Al Brooks and along with Amanda Lott Spike and Tolu LaWol. We will be delivering testimony on behalf of Unlock the Bar. Unlock the Bar is a coalition of system-impacted and allied attorneys, movement lawyers and law students advocating in in New York. advocating in New York for a just and equitable legal profession. In furtherance of our goal of a democratized and representative legal field, we urge the Court of Appeals to expand access to the legal profession to historically excluded New Yorkers instead of expanding barriers. The current structure of the legal profession empowers those who already hold power and disempowers those who do not. The bar examination and character and fitness processes are fixtures that perpetuate this unjust structure. Fundamentally, the question that being, that is being addressed is what makes a good lawyer? And a good lawyer empowers the disempowered. We recommend that the Court of Appeals encourage the kind of bar admissions processes that engender the kind of attorneys that our communities want and need. The legal profession needs more inclusivity, not more exclusivity. Bar admissions processes have a history of racism, fascism, xenophobia, and sexism. The legal profession was designed to create a monopoly over legal power for privileged white men. Accordingly, standardized tests have origins based in eugenics, and their earliest proponents use them to create unscientific stratifications of intelligence based on race. The incorporation of standardized tests into bar admissions processes needs to reckon with the racism at the heart of their design. The Court of Appeals must also reckon with the legal profession's other histories of oppressive exclusivity, particularly the character and fitness process. As Professor Deborah Rodey's landmark studies on the topic revealed, quote, "The white male legal field of the late eighteen hundreds to early nineteen hundreds was very explicit, if not boastful, about the use of character entry requirements to restrict disadvantaged and oppressed racial and political groups from having any formalized access to the legal profession," unquote. And I'll pass to Amanda.
Do we want to, hang on, Amanda, one second. Is it, do you think it's more productive if we field some questions from the committee first relative to Mr. Brooks's testimony, or do we want to hear from everyone and then we'll, I can field some questions?
Some of your questions may be answered in the succeeding testimony from from the other two, so it might be most useful to hold to the end if you don't mind.
I I'm just, I'm wondering if it would be useful or if it would be acceptable to the three presenters to just know like a little bit about you, like, are you, are you practicing? Where'd you go to law school?
So, Mr. Brooks, why don't we go back to you?
Just get out, have you been doing it for a while?
Yeah, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? And then we'll move on to Amanda, because it's a Lot Spike, am I pronouncing that right? Okay, so, Mr. Brooks.
Yeah, this is a wonderful luxury of time we have. It's kind of like taking a flight and finding your upgrade to a bigger seat. And I'm, that's right, so, I'm, free for you to call me Al. I am a twenty-twenty-one graduate of NYU Law School, where I'm the Ru Tilden Kern Scholar, and I was also a pro bono scholar. So I've been really interested to see the different types of creative ideas that have come out of this public comment period around different ways to bar attorneys and encourage public interest participation. I've been practicing for the past four years. And I'm barred, actually, I took the New York Bar as a pro bono state scholar, but I was, ended up getting barred in DC and then in my home state of California. That's where I am now. But I'm, I can't, I can't stay away from New York too much because many of my loved ones, the family, and Unlock the Bar are all there.
Yeah, great, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, can continue. I guess I'll start with an introduction. My name is Amanda Lot Spike. I'm a recent graduate. I graduated last year in May from CUNY School of Law. And I've been, I was admitted to the bar in March, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm currently an immigration staff attorney. So I will continue the testimony. Thank you so much, Al. Okay. More rigorous testing leads to more disparities. As the Court of Appeals considers changing bar admissions processes, it should recognize that more obstacles to licensing do not make better lawyers. While research specific to the New York Law Exam is not available, research on the bar exam has shown that this test really is not a good indicator of whether or not someone will be a good lawyer or a competent lawyer. A former law school dean found that the bar exam is, quote, "An excellent barrier to entry, and it's also a superb hazing ritual." But neither of those things are tasks it's supposed to fill, unquote. A two thousand twenty-three study found that performance on both the multi-state bar examination, the MBE, and essay components had minimal relationship with new lawyers' effectiveness as assessed by supervisors, peers, and judges. At the same time, a rigorous New York-specific exam becomes a measure not of a person's facility with New York law, but of a person's general privilege in being able to take substantial amounts of time off to study specifically for this exam. In addition to the bar exam, students from wealthier backgrounds can afford high-end bar preparation programs and private tutors. First-generation students and members of the working class often must balance their jobs and family responsibilities on top of studying for the bar exam. It is unsurprising then that the bar exam has created a glaring disparate impact on people of color. In two thousand twenty-four, the bar exam results indicated a twenty-two percentage point gap between white and black test takers. The NCBE has claimed that the disparate outcomes are not in effect of the test itself, but of the systemic discrimination of the educational system that produces the test takers. However, as the Institute for the Advancement of the American Legal System has said, quote, "If we find that our system for licensure does nothing but perpetuate these systemic inequities, the onus is on us in the profession to remedy it," unquote. Good lawyering experience makes people good lawyers. Good lawyers develop from connections to their communities, experience, responding with creativity to problems as they arise, dedication to justice, and commitments to empower the clients they work with. Lawyers need to develop the skills of judgment, dealing with factual chaos, collaborative and strategic problem-solving, responding to injustice, and identifying, sharing, and exercising power. Even at their best, assessments can only serve as a proxy for the real preparation for practicing law, which comes from experience practicing the law itself. Many law schools and legal jurisdictions have emphasized experiential learning and used it to assess how well lawyers will perform in a real work environment. Licenseur pathways, such as supervised practice models, now adopted in states like Oregon and Washington, offer a promising solution. The New York State Bar Administration has proposed a similar path to licensure through real-world public interest practice rather than artificial test-taking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna hand it off to Tolu.
Thanks, Amanda. Hi, everyone. My name is Tolu Lawall. I am a staff attorney working at the Center on Recent Equality in Law at NYU, which is actually also where I graduated in twenty nineteen. So I've been practicing in New York for the last six years, I think, at this point. I do civil rights work and criminal legal work as well. I'm also one of the co-founders of Unlock the Bar. And thank you guys so much for allowing us to testify. Along with what Amanda and Al had said earlier, we wanted to just provide some additional recommendations as well. Unlock the Bar believes that a well-resourced, serviceable, and rigorous legal profession, both in New York and across the country, is one where prospective attorneys are reflective of the communities who have been the most harmed by the law and legal systems. In addition to the recommendations we offer above, one of the ways the Court of Appeals can achieve this goal is to address the New York State Character and Fitness Process. As in its past, in recent years, the New York State Character and Fitness Process and its corollaries on the law school applications have negatively impacted prospective attorneys of color, those with mental health challenges, those who are formerly incarcerated, and those who hold politically disfavored beliefs. Many of these applicants report needing to seek legal representation, investing thousands of dollars, fielding invasive, unrelated, and discriminatory questions, and spending years awaiting a licensure decision which may result in a denial. These ill experiences often deter people who have already been marginalized from becoming lawyers. However, those who have been systemically impacted by the law have seen the full contours of the law. And thus, to us, they are the exact kinds of people with the, with the exact kinds of experiences that would make excellent attorneys. So to that end, we also would like to recommend to the Court of Appeals to consider the following. One, holding a public hearing on the state of the New York Character and Fitness Process. Two, creating a commission to study the necessity of the Character and Fitness Process. And three, removing questions from the New York State Character and Fitness Application that perpetuate disparate impact. Unlock the Bar supports the full abolition of character and fitness. However, short of that, there are steps that the Court of Appeals can take currently to revise the Character and Fitness such that it immediately reduces its harmful impact on marginalized communities. In conclusion, in preparation for the next phase of Attorney Licenseur in New York, we urge the Court of Appeals to adopt changes in practices that truly foster a diverse legal profession that is committed to serving the people. New York needs more lawyers who have dedicated themselves to serving New Yorkers and have learned how to do so holistically, zealously, and skillfully. We believe we can achieve that by fostering lawyers who are connected to the communities they come from and part of the communities they serve. Thank you so much for allowing us to provide testimony today. Also, if, when you're asking questions and if I'm answering apologies, I'm actually in the state capital right now in Albany. And so there are people walking back and forth. I'm in front of an elevator, so there's possibility that you might hear some back background.
Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, Judge Glenn, did you have a question for the panel?
I have two questions. As I always do. One is that the, the charge to this committee is quite limited. It is not about the licensure process in general. It's not about the bar exam in general. It's only about the issue of should there be some add-on testing or or otherwise assessing capacity of recent graduates to practice law in New York and and not the larger question. So, so my two questions about that are, one, we, we can't deal with the larger issue in our report, but I think that we could say that there was a real interest in, you know, from some, from some folks who testified, including you, to to rethink at least the possibility of a pilot project on supervised public interest practice as a, as a means of licensure. And so one question, question is, you know, i- if it is possible to put such a recommend, such a request in the report, would you favor that? Number one. And then number two, given that the testimony that we're receiving, the, the, you know, all, all the input from stakeholders is largely about the New York Law Exam and the New York Law Course, there's also a possibility of some kind of carve-out or opt-out that students in in New York or any law students who are gonna take the bar exam might be able to take, which is, which would avoid the additional testing requirement, which would be to say, for example, a course in New York practice and a course in some area, preferably one that you imagine you might be practicing in, that involves New York law. And whether that's something that you would favor as a, as a possibility as an alternative.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to field that question?
I can start with questions one and a little bit of question two, and then pass to Tolu and Amanda for additional thoughts.
Thank you.
Of course. So first, at the limited scope of the advisory committee's role, we, we appreciate and understand that, and we, there, there are a few things that come to mind first. We, you know, basically, we want to make sure that the issue of the Character and Fitness system in particular are being considered in any time that bar admissions processes are being changed because all of these different structures kind of have mutually reinforcing and compounding impacts on one another. So it's important to consider there are issues that are raised by the Character and Fitness Process, particularly the issues of diversity, inclusivity, racism, discrimination against people who are system-impacted or may have substance abuse or mental health conditions or immigration issues. And particularly now, people who are engaging in different types of politically disfavored protest activity and First Amendment activity. Because a negative impact or an additional burden on those people have a compounding impact, no matter where it is in the bar admissions process. But we hope that these principles in general are applicable to each of your work and considering basically the broad scope of issues that I think the Court has already started to engage with since twenty twenty in its different commissions like this one that have sought to rethink how to administer the different processes. So whether it be bar licensure or the bar exam, or there were, there was a commission or special, I believe, the special investigator appointed to to just investigate the issue of racial discrimination within the court system. And we want to encourage a continuation of that analysis. There's a lot further to go. And this is something that students and people in movement spaces have been requesting for a long time. So we, we submitted a longer written testimony that I think tries to drill home this point that many of the issues we're raising here are applicable also in considering what a New York Law Exam and New York Law Course can look like. To the second question about the alternative pathways, Unlock the Bar focuses mostly on the Character and Fitness Process. I can speak for myself and those of us who have been thinking about, in particular, the, I believe, the lawyer's justice for, which I think is a, I personally think is a wonderful idea and a concept in order to improve access to the actual experiential learning that prepares people to be lawyers and to people who may not have the type of privilege that it takes to spend ten weeks and a certain huge amount of money preparing for a specific bar exam in addition to having just gone through all of law school. But really, it's because it gets us closer to what's at the heart of it with this preparing board to do good work and giving them access to the types of supervision and experience that, that makes them the type of lawyer that we need. And I'm not sure if Tolu or Amanda have anything else they'd like to add in response to those questions.
No, I think you did a great job. The only thing I I would say is that, speaking personally, I do think it is important to make sure that attorneys are connected to the communities in which they are, prospective attorneys are connected to the communities in which they are attending school in, because those are the ways in which we actually don't create extractive sort of education systems or institutions, but rather systems that pour back into community. And so personally, I do think it's a good idea to consider ways in which we can ensure that people are more aware of what the sort of legal structures, rules, regulations are within the particular state in which they are entering into. Although we take, as Unlock the Bar, we don't take a position specifically about whether or not some, a particular type of process should be mandated at the moment.
Thank you. You, Les, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have two questions as well. The first is understanding, you know, all the sort of general and specific concerns you you all and Unlock the Bar have about the bar exam, as opposed to the New York specific component or the local component. Does Unlock the Bar have a view about the comparison between the UBE and Next Gen? In other words, do you, do you believe that Next Gen is either better, worse, or the same as relative to the concerns that you have about a bar exam, any bar exam, the bar exam? So that's question one. And then question two is, assuming that this committee does recommend, you know, some New York component relative to known New York component in, as a part of licensure, and saying nothing about whether it would be a New York Law Exam that is the same, more rigorous or less rigorous than the current, does Unlock the Bar have a view about an exam versus a post-licensure CLE regime? So those are two questions.
Okay, who would like to take that question?
I could take the, the second question first, which is, thank you. Which is that Unlock the Bar does hold a position that, and this is something that we spoke about a little bit in our testimony, that exams in and of themselves are not actually good indicators about whether or not somebody has level of competency, fitness, rigor that we are all looking for in terms of what actually makes a good attorney. And in fact, we've seen time and time again that many people might be able to rote memorize certain concepts in a three-month crash course for the bar exam. And the minute that that bar exam is over, people immediately forget anything that they learned about trust in states, for example. And I don't think that that actually is, is beneficial or really serving the people that we want or even creating the sort of core of lawyers that we believe would be reflective of the types of education that we're hoping to instill. And so to us, we actually see that practicum programs, experiential programs, clinical programs, those are ways in which students often get the most out of their law school experience, in particular because they have the opportunity to not just test out the skills in real life, but also to be interacting with community members, community organizations, people who are in need. And in those ways, to me, and I think to Unlock the Bar as well, we end up actually developing what we believe are, are the skills that make a good lawyer, people who are empathetic, who are connected to their communities, who have, who have to sort of deal with the ways that fact patterns are very messy in real life and they're not, they, they, they don't look like what they look like on a page. And often actually then get to really see what the system, the legal system in which they are practicing with provisionally looks like. And those are what gives them the skills. And so for us, we would move in favor of a, of not an exam, but some, some sort of, you know, encouragement for people to engage more with these experiential programs while in law school. I think to your first question about the difference between the Next Gen Bar Exam and the I think to your first question about the difference between the Next Gen bar exam and the bar exam currently, at this moment, UTB doesn't take a position at this time.
If I can just add one thing building off of the first question. Yeah, the question in terms of whether this Next Gen exam is better, I think the same concerns apply with, you know, testing companies kind of monopolizing the market, making it extremely exclusive, unaffordable. Given it, you know, whether it's the UBE or it's this new exam, there are kind of ways in which the kind of exclusivity, the risk of like this exclusivity and accessibility and the barriers continue. I think the question really is about reformulating, not can we have a better exam, but rather rethinking, you know, do we need this standardized testing as we delivered in the testimony? Really, like, there's just a solid solid research on it's on the discriminatory origins and and the we we see still the the impact that it's had. So I encourage the the committee again to kind of step beyond the framework of asking whether you know, whether we can create a new exam or whether we must really collectively envision better better strategies for building good lawyers.
Okay, thank you. Judge Glenn, do you have another question?
Yes. So I so I really appreciate your asking us to think out of the box that we've been put in. And we're in a box. So the, I guess the two questions that I have to ask you go out of what I just heard you say. And and certainly, there's a lot of agreement with the idea that memorization has nothing to do with learning and that and that practicing does and so forth. So so one question is, I I raised before an opt-out from a an additional test on New York law to taking some courses in law school that would afford you having to take the test. But I'm wondering, and I know that this is something that I've I've heard suggested as well, is that the opt-out might also be either combined with a course or in lieu of a course, supervised practice in a setting that involves New York law. So some some taking a clinic that involves practice in New York, obviously not international trade clinic, but, you know, a criminal defense clinic or a Wilson Trust clinic or a housing clinic or whatever. Would you support or encourage that as an as an alternative for students who chose to or applicants who chose to do it rather than an additional test on New York law, number one? And then number, well, why don't you answer that first, because the second question is a different question?
Yeah, I'd be happy to to answer that. So earlier, I referenced, I believe, the Lawyer's Justice Court, which I think is a proposal that was made by the New York State Bar Association and considering changes to the to the New York bar exam, which I think has a lot of the elements that you were you were highlighting, which I I as I think we put in in our written testimony as well, that that is a model that we encourage and that there New York as well as states like Oregon and Washington have been pursuing systems through which people can be barred without having to take bar exams like this. And those are the types of creative ideas that that Unlock the Bar tends to encourage because they are in pursuing a really fundamentally, when we get down to it, kind of common sense ways to actually prepare lawyers to be good lawyers rather than continuing to kind of perpetuate what has been called by, you know, other people who've studied bar exam admissions processes as just superb hazing rituals that we kind of continue to go through because they've been done before, like some of some of the exams that are kind of more disconnected from the type of skills that we want to have in practicing lawyers. And so the concept of supervised practice, particularly in partnership with a course, that sounds a lot like a pro bono scholars program that I I found to be very valuable. I can speak from personal experience and I still work with clients that I met when I was a pro bono scholar four years ago now. And so I think that type of model is absolutely preferential, or I'll say, in my opinion, very much preferential to the existing kind of ro- memorization and just do it because this is the way it's been done type of bar examination processes. In particular, where, as as you highlighted, they give people the opportunity to get out of the classroom and into communities that are affected by the law that we practice. So housing clinics, criminal defense clinics are excellent. I participated in both when I was in law school also. And that's honestly where the knowledge that I still rely on and in my own civil rights practice and criminal defense practice comes from, rather than from the, you know, similar types of law school courses where we're kind of trying to memorize in order to be able to produce a good score on a test, which is kind of all in this illusory academic area. I think it's much more meaningful both to close the existing justice gap that exists for New Yorkers who don't have access to lawyers and also to to close the gap between what we learn in law school and what we need to know to practice to actually just have students getting as close to practice as soon as possible. But
Excuse me for just a minute. I I want to I want to narrow this to the things that we can talk about and that we can't talk about. And and while I am, as I'm sure if you know anything about me, entirely sympathetic to everything that you have to say, it's also true that an enormous number of people who take the New York bar are A, from outside New York State, B, not going to be be involved in community-based practice, and C, foreign graduates who are certainly not going to be practicing in our local communities. So the, when we talk about the bar exam in general and we talk about the New York, any New York specific add-on, you know, we have to take them into consideration, which is why I I phrased it as a would you like us to say, you know, you should consider an alternative to the bar exam that involves supervised practice, particularly in a in a public interest way? But also, given that there will probably be some New York specific thing, would you like there to, would you recommend as an alternative either taking courses in law school that the student could choose or doing supervised practice in an experiential setting that involves New York law, just so that we we would be able to say, so you don't recommend this?
Understood. The yes, the short answer to both of your questions is yes and yes. We would say that we absolutely prefer that folks in law school would have the chance to, in lieu of a test, have the chance to take courses that would allow them to be practicing in an experiential way. And I think to the first question that you said about our recommendation about whether or not to do a bar exam or instead do sort of post post graduation, sort of provisional licensure, those are the types of alternatives to bar exam that we're interested in. I know Al mentioned a couple of them. There are actually a bunch of other states actually that are starting to move in that direction. And then, as we know, obviously, Wisconsin is the only state right now that does diploma privilege where just on the mere basis of you graduating, you are then allowed to become a bar attorney. And so that those are the kinds of things that we're interested in, yes.
And then the second question is, let's assume for a moment that there's going to be a course. And one of the questions is, should there be a course and an exam after the course, or should there just be a course? And I'm wondering about your thoughts about whether, I assume that you you took the New York law course, which, as I understand it, is not developed by, you know, a small group of law school professors using the most advanced stuff about pedagogy and learning and feedback and so forth, but is, you know, kind of a bunch of CLEs and and materials that have, you know, good information. So I'm I'm wondering if you have thoughts about whether if there's going to be an add-on that it could just be a course and how that course might be better structured or improved to increase the learning that people would take out of it. So it would be actually useful in practice and useful to people who are going to practice in New York State and not add-on the addition of another test with all of the, you know, that that brings.
Right, yes. I I we we definitely take the position that we don't believe that there should be additional examination requirements or testing requirements as an add-on and that these that a court, a development of a course should be something that we should consider more. In terms of the way that the course itself might look or be structured, to your point, it 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 does sound like something that would require perhaps a working group to really look into what are some of the best practices of ensuring that people get the most information out of the courses that they're taking, ensuring that they actually are applicable and that they have sort of long-term pedagogical staying power and application. And so to us, I think one of the things we could recommend actually is that there should be potentially a working group to really think through a little bit further what a course itself might look like in terms of its application in the law school.
And and just follow up on that one more time if my colleagues on the committee would indulge me. New York law is is different, obviously, from nowhere law, which is tested in the in the new gen. But but assuming for a moment that we recommend or that the court adopts a course, what what areas of New York law, if any, do you think should be emphasized or should it be a sort of scattershot of, you know, two hours on family law and two hours on this and two hours on that? And or, as your recent experience of being law students, relatively recent experience of being law students, in a in a course that's probably going to be given remotely as the New York law course is, is there a way that you have found or that you know of that is that is useful to make it more interactive and to bring into bear what we know about the pedagogy of adult learning so that it's not just lecture and whatever, but that instead of the test at the end that is about memorization or looking at the table of contents of the materials that you're given, it is really about immediately responding to the subject matter material and the way in which it's utilized and so forth?
Yeah, I could take a little bit of this in the beginning and obviously pass it to Al and Amanda if they'd like to answer more. You know, I think it's a really great question about whether, like, what kinds of materials should be or what topic or subject area should be considered. Without having enough time to really think through it, I I want to stop short of really putting in specific recommendations, but I would say that it is important to be covering the areas that are impacting marginalized communities most. So oftentimes, that's civil civil matters regarding housing issues or family separation issues. And and as as well, if you consider criminal legal issues, obviously, sort of trial matters and then post-conviction matters as well, people who are engaging in parole preparation work, things like that. There are there are definitely different areas that if we sort of survey, how are New Yorkers most impacted? Those are the areas that I think would be some of the most important to include as subject matters on any kind of course. And then for me personally, I would say that the ways that I know that I've learned the best is when I see a real person connected to the work that I'm doing. And so I I have found the most sort of bright and kinetic ways that I've learned is when I've been able to go into community organizations and work with them directly on a case matter where then I get to see, I get to develop relationships and then really see the sort of progress of the work that I'm doing in real time. And so anything that actually connects you to, again, real New Yorkers, marginalized New Yorkers, people, community-based organizations that are doing work to support our communities is is important to me. And I'll pass it to Amanda and Al to see whether or not they have anything additional.
And if I could just ask them, what what we are hearing from people is or from some people is, we want to make the, we want to make the course better, we want to make the exam better, or or maybe we don't need an exam if the course is better. And so the question is, what what from your experience or from your knowledge and so forth could make the course better as opposed to having as an alternative to the New York law exam and the New York law course, an experiential alternative? So you know, I mean, we we aren't talking to many recent graduates and and here you are. And this is an opportunity for us to talk to you and you're obviously, you know, all very bright and thoughtful and committed. And so just putting aside that it's not your favorite thing to think about, can can we can we argue for or can we recommend or can we present to the Court of Appeals that there need not be an exam if there is a law course because the law course can be more than just a bunch of talking heads that people sit through and put the numbers on or the codes or whatever to show that they were there, even though they may or may not, you know, have been there in in their heart. What what makes for good learning, especially if you've had this experience, and I guess some of you were in law school during COVID, what makes for good learning remotely, or what makes for the best possible learning remotely?
So, again, I'll reiterate, as Tolu was saying, we want to make sure we're being kind of judicious in in statements we take or statements we make about an exam in particular. I'll say personally, I don't I don't think that an additional exam is necessary. I think, again, I'm more interested in in the type of processes to provide people with the information that they need and the connections that they need rather than and 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 kind of build good lawyers rather than exams and other systems that are intended to stream out or create barriers to other people becoming parts of the legal profession. And so with that in mind, I think, you know, most most of the focus of our attention has been on the types of experiential tracks that I think would create create better lawyers. I can say, yeah, somebody who took the New York law course and New York law exam four years ago, I honestly, I found it to be one of the many parts of the of the law school and legal admission and law and bar admission process that feels like it's just something we kind of have to do to do it. And and it kind of teaches, I think, in in a subconscious way, that there are all these requirements and rules of ethics and things that are just that just exist to kind of be dealt with and avoided and moved through rather than something we really have a genuine connection to and find value in. And I think that, as Tolu was saying, those things that were helpful for me were genuine connections to people and understanding the issues that we work with from the perspective of the the real person dealing with the real material condition that's impacted by the work that we do. And so I would just encourage kind of avoiding the formalistic structures that kind of end up taking attention and time away from maybe why somebody really went to law school in the first place and encouraging more genuine connection where people are, with the communities that they're in. But I I wouldn't, I don't think we'll go so far as to, you know, suggest a particular curriculum or range of courses. I will also say, but again, what prepared me to be a lawyer was practice and experience doing the type of law that I ended up doing. And so I certainly, you know, although, you know, a law license is a general license, I'm not practicing, as Tolu mentioned, you know, wills and or trust law. And so I don't think we need to cover every aspect of law. I think the the recommendation proposed, for example, in the in Lawyer's Justice Court was that a supervisor for a student who can, who's working in a legal services organization and basically certify at the end of a six-month period that this person is prepared to practice that law, which is, again, all law school basically is learning how to then teach yourself other types of law. And so I think those same principles can be adopted when people have experience in in many of these types of law rather than needing a full survey of all types. And Amanda is also the most recent graduate. If there's more time, and Amanda has thoughts.
No, I was just nodding along because because I'm in full agreement, absolutely. I have nothing more.
So you don't want to help me out?
I don't know if this is going to help you or not, Chris, but but I listening to your questions, it actually, I I had sort of the same reaction. First, I want to thank you all for for your thoughtful and thought-provoking testimony. I think very helpful. I I am interested, as recent graduates, we've heard a lot about people who've gone through the exam, what they thought about the New York law course and what they thought about the New York law exam. And and we've heard sort of a range of things. You know, anecdotally, we've heard a lot of people say that they didn't get a lot out of the course. We we had testimony this morning from somebody who thought it was valuable and and thought that the notes and the materials were actually helpful to somebody who's going to be practicing. We've heard from people saying that the the law exam itself was kind of a strategy thing. It's really about outlining more than really about learning. I just wonder if if you all have anything to sort of add to that. Al, I know you you've already talked a little bit about your experience with it, but but I wonder if just outside of your testimony, just your own experience, taking the law course and the law exam, if you have any observations that, you know, would be helpful to us?
I can actually go, so I I'm the, I guess, the person who graduated the earliest and took the New York law exam earlier than Amanda and Al. So it's been six years and I will honestly say that I cannot remember almost anything about the New York law course at all. I do remember that it was remote. I do remember that it was like 20 hours, if I'm not mistaken. I remember I was watching several videos. I I remember that there were, I think, some sort of pop-up signs in some sort of way to sort of denote whether or not we've been paying attention. I remember that there was a, there was something at the end in order to, again, like, sort of I remember that there was a, there was something at the end in order to, again, like sort of test comprehension about whether or not you were actually paying attention to the material. And I literally still, I remember all those things. I literally cannot remember the content of the New York law course. And I think that's a problem. And I think this is to, you know, Judge Glenn's point that there's, we have, there needs to be obviously something very different about the way that this course is being administered or taught in order to allow us to actually understand, to comprehend, retain and understand what all is being taught. And I, for me, I, I, it's hard because it is remote. And I think in and of itself, remote learning, you're going to end up losing a lot of sort of the ability for people to engage actively and critically with the work. And so that's, that's just one thing to be considering about whether or not there's a way to really incorporate, again, a lot of the things that are happening within the New York laws, law course into the course of some sort of law, law, law school. So that way people are going to be engaging with it in person more actively, if they have the ability to do that. Additionally, I think that the, the types of, and you know, we've mentioned it already, of course, but the types of pedagogy that get people more interested is whenever they can relate it to something within their personal life or a personal issue or a community issue, or something that's connected, again, to the ways in which they are moving through the world as a civic member of, of their society. And so making it more connected in that way where it's like, okay, the people who are, when we're taking this New York law course, maybe one of the people who are teaching this law course or administering a part of this law course is from a community organization who has to deal with or interface with these issues consistently. That could be a way in which people are more apt to pay attention to it because this has, is, it real effects and people are interacting with an actual person and a set of members, a membership, excuse me, of a sort of community organization that they have to be accountable to or responsive to in some sort of way. Those are just like some short things that I can think about at the moment right now. But I, I do agree that the New York law course is not, it, it is currently administered, is not one that engenders or facilitates any sort of retention of the actual material on the course itself. And in fact, again, as Al had mentioned, I think Amanda had mentioned this earlier, people see it as just, this is another thing that I need to do begrudgingly in order to get through my requirements so that I can then apply for licensure. And I don't think that that's, I, I think we can, I could speak for all of us that that's not what we want to, to happen. We want people to be actively engaging with material because it has real-world effects on actual people.
Yeah, I just want to say, when I said help me out, it's like, how can we make it better? If that's what we're going to end up with, and it may well be. I mean, we had the law deans on this morning and they all want to keep it and make it better. But nobody told us what would make it better. So I think that was really helpful. Thank you, Ms. Law.
Just to also add off that, in full, total agreement with what you've said, Tolu, and the idea of the application really stuck with me, right? The application of the law. I perhaps am the person that most recently took the exam, the New York law exam just last year. And yeah, I didn't really, now having practiced very briefly, you know, I'm new, newly admitted attorney, but I can say unfortunately, the applicability of what I learned in preparing for the New York law exam, the New York law course, it just doesn't reflect the day-to-day concerns that I have as an attorney, the support needs that I have, the actual content, the case matters, the deadlines. If we're really talking about applicability and practicality of this knowledge, I, there are just so many kind of other ways to really bring someone in, to engage them, to understand the real-life stakes. I think having it behind a screen, having it in a course that's really separated from the actual reality of the law and the way it's applied discriminately, disparately, you know, that really, it doesn't offer much for practice. I am figuring it out regardless. In my practice, in my day-to-day, I'm learning the things, perhaps the knowledge that I, I, you know, wasn't able to receive through various testing requirements. But it would be, it's a really beautiful thing to come together and to envision, how can we really push for applicability? So I love that suggestion, Tolu, of bringing someone in from a community-led organization. I understand, Judge Glenn, that it's, you know, true, can't imagine that everyone's going to go into a, a public service work, but at the same time to really tether the law in, in, in the ways that it impacts people, impacts people's lives and to see also the tremendous need. I just went to, you know, I did a CUNY Citizenship Now clinic, spoke to a bunch of attorneys that were there for pro bono hours and just seeing like the real need and desire to have, regardless of what they practice in the day-to-day, to see the impact of the law on the communities that they're a part of.
Can I say one more thing? Because that's, this really interests me again. I'm, and I keep thinking about, if we're going to have the course, how can the course be good, both in terms of imparting as much knowledge as people can get out of a course, especially of course online? But, but I'm interested in just, I, I know it's not exactly what you said, but it struck me that the suggestion of bringing in some community practice to such a course would not only be obviously quite useful to people who are going to go into community practice, but also might be a way of really encouraging the larger number of graduates who are not doing that to do pro bono in, in a way that maybe we don't do enough of, so that there could be another, another piece of this that is of benefit to the profession as a whole and, and obviously to the many, many clients and prospective clients and hope they can be clients of lawyers in New York to deal with their legal problems. So would I, would I be accurate in saying that, that you see the possibility in the course by bringing in some community practice of also encouraging pro bono for people who are not doing community practice in general? So it's not just, you know, for CUNY grads and NYU grads?
Yes, I would, I would say that that's accurate, that bringing in, the more we connect people to recognizing that the law is not operating within a vacuum and that it is actually having real-world impact on people, that it's not just doctrinal or black letter law, but rather this is people's ability to have housing. This is people's ability to get meals, this is people's ability to stay with their families, this is people's ability to get home and be free. The more we can connect people to the fact that that's what we're learning about, the more we're going to encourage people to actually practice that kind, utilize their, their legal skills to practice that kind of law, whether it is because they're practicing within a public service or organization or they are deciding to work for their own sort of law firm or they are deciding to utilize their private interest time to support pro bono work. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, did you still have a question, Michael, or, okay, great. Does anybody else on the committee have any more questions? Well, it sounds good. We really appreciate your time and efforts here today. And I think that concludes our public hearing for today. I want to remind everybody that we do have our last public hearing scheduled for June 9th, between the hours of one and five. We encourage participation. And today was, we had some healthy conversations and testimony. We appreciate everybody's efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, take care.